Moving straight into the agenda then, the minutes of the meeting that took place on the 3rd of August have been on the table for the last thirty minutes. Are you content I assign them as a correct record of that meeting?
Yes.
Thank you, I'll do so after the meeting, Emma. Item two, apologies for absence, Emma.
None received, Chair.
Okay, declaration of interest.
I believe all Hazelmead Town Councilers declare a non-perjury interest.
Thank you very much. Further questions from members of the public, Emma, has there been any?
None received, Chair.
Thank you. And Peter, relevant updates on government guidance or legislation?
Thank you, Chairman. Yeah, just, this is a sort of general update for both items on the, on your agenda tonight. On pages sixteen and pages fifty-six of the agenda, we refer to the weight to be given to the local plan, the emerging local plan. I won't read the entire update, but the evidence that we've been recently given to the public inquiry at Waverley Lane is that, at this stage, it is considered that significant weight can be given to our pre-submission plan, following its publication on Friday, nineteenth of August, given its history of preparation thus far, the iterations of it and the extent of consultations and considerations on its date. Obviously, as we work through, the weight to be given to that will continue to rise, but we're advised by council that we can be giving significant weight to it, and that is the evidence that we put before the inquiry, as I say, for the Waverley Lane. So that's just a general update on pages, on page sixteen and fifty-six of the agenda where we talk about the local plan. Also, just to pick up on position, you advised at the previous meeting that we're now able to demonstrate a housing land supply, well, the council is now, thinks it's now able to demonstrate a housing land supply. So in terms of policy C2, you'll be aware, as I say, in demonstrating a housing land supply, this means that policies such as C2, which restrict the supply of housing, can now be given greater weight in the determination of a planning application, whereas a few months ago, when we have applications that were in the countryside, we were saying less weight could be given to those. However, full weight cannot be given to these, as this, as C2, as this policy protects the countryside for its own sake, whereas the MPPF and the emerging local plan seeks to protect the country, countryside for its intrinsic character and beauty. So there's a slight change in description there. As such, whilst the council cannot, can demonstrate an adequate supply, this does not mean that all development falling within areas covered by C2 should not be allowed, and if it is considered to be in a sustainable location and doesn't harm intrinsic character and beauty, we should be supporting development. Hopefully, that's useful, but I'm happy to take any comments around those if that's helpful. Thank you, Chairman.
Commissioner Edwards.
Thank you, Chairman. I'm just trying to get this clear in my mind, so they, if it's in the countryside and they can build houses, how is that not harming the intrinsic value of the countryside? I don't understand the reasoning there.
Sorry, Peter.
That's all right, thank you, Chairman, thank you, Commissioner Edwards. Yeah, apology, so, I mean, C2, just, everything that falls outside of our developed area boundaries is classified as C2. Not all of that land is of a high quality value, intrinsic character and open countryside. Some of it's garden land, some of it's, say, previously developed land or just untidy land, which doesn't really contribute to the character of the countryside. So there's a key change in wording, whereas policy C2 says the countryside must be protected for its own sake, it doesn't take account of its value in terms of its landscape value or anything like that, whereas the MPPF and the emerging local plan says you must consider whether it harms the intrinsic character and beauty of the countryside. Not all areas covered by C2 are of good quality landscape or visual value. Thank you, Chair.
Please do.
Thank you. So can you give me an example of building in the countryside that doesn't harm the intrinsic value of the countryside?
Thank you, Chairman. I think the first application on the agenda is in the countryside, I won't go into it because Gemma's got the presentation to go through, but that is a site that's on the edge of a developed, on the edge of the settlement boundary, it's garden area, it's not open countryside, it doesn't contribute to the wider countryside, and that's, that's the view set out on the, on the application. So you could take a piece of land, just a small strip of land, that's unrelated to open countryside, and that might be an example, but I'll let Gemma take you through this and you can take that as a consideration.
Right, can I come back again? Okay, I understand what you're saying of this particular application, because it is part of the settlement. So if it wasn't part of the settlement, and it was a, I don't know, there was a, an ex-farmer's cottage or something, and somebody wanted to build in the garden there, that would be harmful, am I right in thinking that?
It will depend on the circumstance of the site, but the site before you is outside of the settlement but adjacent to, sorry if I wasn't clear on that. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you very much indeed. We'll move on then to the quarterly appeals update. Louise.
Thank you, Chairman. The first appeal on your agenda is at Elverton House on Shortfield Common Road in Frenchham. This was for the conversion and extension to create two dwellings. This application was refused under delegated authority due to it being inappropriate greenbelt development. The inspector disagreed with the council and concluded that sufficient information had been submitted with the appeal to demonstrate that the land was already used as garden land, and as such, the proposal would not constitute inappropriate greenbelt development. He therefore allowed the appeal. And the second appeal was at eighteen to twenty-two St Christopher's Road. This was for the erection of five houses and was refused under delegated authority due to the unacceptable design and cramped appearance due to the number of dwellings proposed, insufficient car parking and the impact on a tree. The inspector agreed with the council that the scheme would be of an unacceptable design, but disagreed with the council, concluding that the parking level was acceptable and the impact on the tree was also acceptable. He did dismiss the appeal. This application was also subject to a costs application. The inspector partially awarded costs to the appellant as the inspector felt that the council had acted unreasonably, as they had unreasonably relied on their parking guidelines without considering the characteristics of the area sufficiently. The next appeal was at Rivendell on Tilford Road in Rushmore for the erection of a garage. This was refused under delegated authority due to the inappropriate greenbelt development, the impact on the AOMB and AGLV, and the harm to the street scene. The inspector agreed that the proposal would be inappropriate greenbelt development, but felt the appearance hadn't acceptable, was acceptable in the street scene, but he dismissed the appeal. The next appeal at one Dockenfield Farm cottages the street in Dockenfield was for the erection of extensions. This was refused under delegated authority due to the impact on the intrinsic beauty of the countryside and harm to protected species. Additional information was submitted with the appeal to overcome the issue with regards to protected species, but the inspector agreed with the council's conclusions in relation to harm to the countryside and dismissed the appeal. The next two appeals were both at Dockenfield Farm on Pitt Lane for the partial demolition of one barn and the renovation of two other barns to form residential development, and the replacement of an existing barn and sheds with a residential development. These were both refused under delegated authority due to the isolated location, the loss of privacy to adjoining occupiers, and insufficient privacy, poor outlook, and the unacceptable provision of amenities based. The inspector dismissed both appeals, agreeing with the conclusions of the council. One of these applications was also subject to a costs application, and the inspector, however, dismissed the cost application, concluded that the council had not behaved unreasonably. The next appeal was at Hindhead Furnishings in Hindhead. This was for the erection of six dwellings and associated works. This was refused due to the cramped and crowded development, the impact on the adjoining occupiers, and the failure to provide adequate car parking. The inspector agreed with the council in relation to the cramped and crowded development and the impact on the adjoining occupiers, but disagreed that insufficient car parking had provided due to the availability of on-street car parking, and he dismissed the appeal. This application was also subject to a costs application, but the inspector did not award costs as the council had not behaved unreasonably. The next appeal was at Borough House Farm on Jumps Road in Chert for the erection of a single-storey rear extension. This was refused under delegated powers due to the inappropriate greenbelt development. The inspector agreed with the council and dismissed this appeal. And the final appeal was at Lee Meadow in Chert for the erection of a replacement dwelling and garage. This was refused under delegated authority due to the inappropriate greenbelt development and the impact on the AOMB and AGLV, and the inspector agreed with the council and dismissed this appeal. And I'm happy to answer any questions that councillors may have.
Thank you, Louise. Just make two comments myself, if I may. I mean, I think the planning department's done rather well on this one, but how on earth the St Christopher's Road appeal was allowed when two, two of the three points were against allowing it, and then the one purely on parking guidelines was allowed?
Oh, if I was, it was actually dismissed, but the cost, yeah, cost allowed.
Yes, but I'm talking about the cost one, sorry, sorry indeed. And the idea that Hindhead Furnishing Warehouse on Hill Road, there's enough on-street car parking, I'm sorry, I don't know what planet he visited, it certainly wasn't Beacon Hill, Hill Road, Beacon Hill Road or Grove Road, totally incorrect. Commissioner Edwards.
Thank you, Chairman. Just going back to item nine there, the Hindhead Furnishing Warehouse, their application was for costs against Waverley, I take it. I would have thought that Waverley should have got costs against Hindhead Furnishing, personally, and that's my only comment on that, thank you.
Don't think that's allowed, but still. Any other comments, members? In that case, we'll move on then. Application, oh, site visit in the event of any being necessary Tuesday the twenty-seventh of September, is a time to be agreed. Moving on to WA twenty sixteen zero nine seven six, erection of three dwellings together with construction of two new accesses, revision of WA twenty sixteen zero one six nine at Shortfield House, Hamish Lane, Frenchham, GU ten three AU, and Gemma's going to introduce this one to the committee.
Sorry about that, thank you, Chairman. The site lies to the west of Hamish Lane and comprises a garden curtilage associated with Shortfield House. The site, shown as outlined in red on this plan, currently contains a domestic tennis court associated with the main dwelling. The site is bounded by a number of trees and is verdant in character. There is residential built form located to the west of the site, bounding the highway to the south. The land to the north of the site is currently under construction, following granted planning permission for the erection of two dwellings. To the north-east of the site lies Shortfield House and its associated domestic outbuildings and paraphernalia. The application seeks permission for the erection of two three-bedroom semi-detached dwellings and one four-bedroom detached dwelling, together with two attached garages, new access points from the highway, which will involve alterations to the existing boundary rule, the formation of hard surfacing, and a further new boundary wall treatment, and landscaping. The proposed detached dwelling would feature a barn hip roof with a front protruding gable element, a flat roof rear elevation with a roof lantern is also sought. Materials proposed includes clay tile, bargate stone, and sailborne brick, which would meet the material recommendations in the Frenchham Village Design Statement. The floor plans demonstrate the internal layout of the accommodation proposed, which includes an open-plan kitchen and dining area, and two living areas at ground-floor level, and at first-floor level, a family bathroom and four bedrooms, one of which contains an en suite above the proposed garage, served by a dormer window. The proposed semi-detached dwellings would reflect the barn hip and protruding gable elements of the proposed detached dwelling, and would also feature flat roof rear elements served by roof lanterns. These dwellings propose accommodation within the roof space, which would be served by three roof lights to the rear of each dwelling. The materials would replicate those sought on the proposed detached dwelling. The floor plans again demonstrate the internal layout of the accommodation proposed, which includes an open-plan kitchen and dining area, and two living areas at ground-floor level, with two bedrooms, one with an en suite and a family bathroom at first-floor level. One dwelling also seeks a small living area at first-floor level above the proposed garage, which would be served by a dormer window. Within the roof space, a third bedroom with en suite is proposed. In terms of the location of the development, the site lies within eight metres of the rural settlement boundary of Shortfield. The settlement contains a village shop and post office and a public house within walking distance of the site. Just outside of the settlement boundary is a bus stop that provides a service between Aldershot and Farnham and Hazelmead to Hindhead. Moving on to some photographs now, this photograph shows the existing tennis court within the site, and gives you an idea of the topography of the site. And this is a photograph looking from in the site towards the main highway, just to show the boundary treatment. And this photograph here just shows you the built form, which bounds the other side of Hamlish Lane. This picture again is showing from Hamlish Lane with the boundary wall, just gives you an idea of the trees and the sort of verdant character of the area, and then noting the built form the other side. And this is from inside the site, looking out again. This site photograph here currently shows the picture of the two dwellings currently under construction on the land to the north of the site, so they're quite at advanced stage at the moment. Moving to the determining issues, the matters of technical and judgment and opinion are the principle of development, having regard to the site comprising previously developed land, considered to be in a sustainable location, the location of development, noting the proximity of the site to the rural settlement of Shortfield with its associated facilities, parking and highways, considering the technical opinion of the county highways professionals, who have raised no objection to the proposal, and matters of safe operation of the highway, subject to relevant conditions, an impact on the SPA and SAC, noting that the overall scale of the scheme and the availability of alternative recreational opportunities in the area. Members are being asked to exercise their judgment on the impact on the countryside and visual amenity, having regard to the surrounding character of the area, which includes residential built form, and noting the provision of additional landscaping. The impact on residential amenity, having regard to the orientation and distances between the proposals and the surrounding residential built form, heritage, in taking note of the professional opinion of the council's historic building officer, in that the character of the undesignedated heritage asset, which is Shortfield House, would be safeguarded, and amenity and technical space standards, in having regard to the scheme meeting the government's nationally described space standards, and providing a suitable amount of private garden space proposed for each dwelling. We now take members to the update. They'll note that an additional condition is being recommended to secure drainage system, sorry, scheme. As such, the revised recommendation is that permission be granted, subject to conditions one to fourteen on pages thirty-nine to forty-three of the agenda report, condition fifteen as set out on page one of the update sheet, and informatives one to eight on pages forty-three to forty-five of the agenda report. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you very much, Gemma. Now we turn to public speaking, and Andrew Vandos, you have four minutes.
Good evening, members. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak on behalf of my client, Mr and Mrs Wicks, who live at Shortfield House. My clients have sought to achieve a small, low-density development of three houses on part of their land currently used as a tennis court confronting Hamlish Lane. My clients have been very, have every intention to continue to live in Shortfield House, and are therefore very keen to achieve a well-designed small development in keeping with the overall character and appearance of Hamlish Lane, Frenchham Village, and of course, Shortfield House itself. It is noted, noted from the officer report, that the historic buildings officer considers the scheme to retain the setting of Shortfield House, which although not listed, is nevertheless considered to be a non-designated heritage asset, and one that adds to the historical understanding of Frenchham Village and how it has developed over time. We welcome the fact that your planning officers are supporting the scheme. The officer report is very detailed and thorough, and covers all the material planning issues pertaining to this development proposal. In addition, I would point out that an earlier planning application for a slightly larger pair of semi-detached dwellings and a detached house on this site was withdrawn following comments from the highways engineer. The current scheme, we feel, has addressed the highway concerns, but also sought to address some of the concerns raised by neighbours. The current proposal admits previously proposed roof dormers on the rear of the semi-detached houses. The overall width and bulk of the semi-detached houses has also been reduced. Members will note that the county highways engineer is satisfied with the proposed parking layout and visibility displays, and therefore raises no objection to the proposal. The recently approved pair of detached houses in the north-east of the site on land adjacent to Shortfield House and Tignalls Cottage were subject to the same policies of restraint that apply in the countryside beyond the greenbelt and outside defined settlement areas. The planning application was nevertheless considered by this planning committee in September of last year, and two detached houses were approved. The officer report states that the proposed houses are considered to be well-sighted in relation to neighbouring dwellings and to Hamlish Lane. The officer report acknowledges that Hamlish Lane contains the residential dwellings of mixed age, design, and the area has a mixed pattern of development, including detached, semi-detached, and even terraced dwellings. The proposed dwellings have adequate separation between them and the surrounding neighbouring properties, so as not to result in any material overlooking or loss of privacy. The proposed garden lamenti areas are considered by the planning officers to be of suitable size for the size of houses proposed, and the internal dwelling floor areas would fully comply with government technical housing standards for internal space. Therefore, we concur with the officer's report, where it is stated that the addition of three new dwellings in this location would not be harmful to the rural village setting, and the proposal would suitably conserve or enhance the character of the surrounding countryside. It is noted that no objections to a proposal are raised by Thames Water, Natural England or Surrey Wildlife Trust. So in summary, it's hoped that members will concur with their officers, that the proposal is not in conflict with government advice as contained in the MPPF, and the proposal would not harm the character of the rural village, would not be harmful to the AGLV, and would not have a detrimental impact on the amenities of neighbouring residential occupiers. Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you, Mr Vandos. Members, for you. Sorry, Commissioner Adams.
Sir, I was, sir?
Yeah, no, sorry.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. I think actually the designs of these houses is quite good. They're a bit too high, considering that this is the high side of Hamlish Lane. I'm disappointed that there are three dwellings, I would have thought two would have just about fitted with a wider gap between them. But I am concerned, the, there was reference to the two houses being built to the north of this site. Originally, that had three houses proposed on it, and that was rejected. It's now, and when the two houses were presented, the reason that it was approved was because they had large gardens and were therefore not really in conflict with the fact that they're only less than one kilometre from the spa. These don't have those large gardens. In fact, they're packed, it's really interesting because the illustration we've been shown on the screen and on the location plan doesn't actually mark the houses on the location plan, so it's very difficult to see how big they are in relation to that space. But I think, considering there are two on there, and looking at the CGI's of the mock-up relative to the houses to the south or left of that picture, and the right, they're obviously significant, they're obviously pretty large. So I think that this is overbuilt, and I think that the first two houses on Orchard, the Orchard would probably not have been approved either if this had been put up at the same time. So I do think that it is too close to the spa, and they are too big, that's the first point. Second point is that it is in the AGLV. Now, I don't agree with the officers here, because this part of the AGLV is in the candidate area for AOMB, and every, the three boroughs and districts which have got approved local plans, who have candidate areas of AGLV, have been allowed by the inspectors to treat that candidate area as AOMB, because to be a candidate area, it has already passed the fifteen qualification points that are necessary for it to get to, to stage three of the qualification exercise. So this, the reason this is not AOMB is purely because the Natural England haven't got round to it. It's not actually going to, it's no doubt that it will be AOMB fairly soon. So those four, five properties along the north side of Hamish Lane are actually considerably overbuilding what was a small gap in the AOMB, and really made a nice defiling point of the countryside as against the settlement. Of course, it's because that gap was there that that part of Hamish Lane isn't actually in the settlement. If there'd been houses there in their first place, it probably would have been in the settlement. So really, we're putting the cart before the horse here. And the third point is, of course, the fact, as Mr Cleaveland has said, we do now have our housing supply, so these houses are in fact unnecessary. So I will be objecting to this application. Thank you.
Commissioner Edwards.
Thank you, Chairman. I actually agree wholeheartedly with my colleague here. The information supplied by the officers is very sort of wishy-washy, in my opinion. There should be a proper block plan, and it would be nice to see the houses currently being built on the plan. I know, I know they're there, but how far away from the road, what's the size of the gardens? And it's all very sort of, you know, up in the air, and I'm not happy about it. I know Hamish Lane, I looked at the site where the other two houses had been built, so I know what it's like, it's a lovely area. We went to have a look at it twelve months ago, or fifteen months ago, wherever it was, and it's beautiful. The parish council strongly object to this proposal. The gardens aren't big enough, I think the applicant is being greedy, retaining all this land, they've got plenty of land, they've got plenty of land to accommodate these houses. There should be two detached dwellings, and they should go right across the front with an access for the current building. So I, unless my other colleagues can come up with sound reasons, I will be objecting to this application. Thank you.
Commissioner King.
Thank you very much, Chairman. I'd actually like to ask a question of the officers, if I may, please. From the photographs we've seen, the site obviously slopes, and I'm unsure which direction it actually slopes in. And the reason I'm asking the question is, these houses are quite, quite a significant mass, and the two cottages, well, the houses that were evident on the photographs, look as if they would be significantly overlooked, although without the proper plan, it's actually difficult to determine how close they actually are, but in the photographs, they look very close. A lot of that, of course, will depend on the rise or fall of the land, and I haven't got sufficient information on that to be able to make a firm judgement on it, so I wonder if I could be advised, please.
Gemma.
Thank you for your question. The land itself actually slopes down towards Hamlish Lane, so it starts at the top and then will slope down. Thank you, Chairman.
Commissioner Hall.
Thank you, Chairman. I mean, I must say, I agree with Commissioner Edwards here, I mean, they do, it does somewhat look like they're sort of cramming them in like sardines. I mean, I think two dwellings would be far more appropriate for a piece of land that size. It looks like they've tried to absolutely maximise the amount of dwellings they can get on there, at the expense of garden size and utility. So yeah, I think, I think I'd be objecting to it.
Commissioner Wright.
Thank you, John. May I just ask a question, because I'm not quite sure I understand where the site, the north of the site is. Is it to the north of the blue area, or is it to the north of the red area? It's that, where little trees are, and this is the site we considered and indeed visited some while ago, a year ago. Which is under construction, which has two houses on it, for the full depth. So one of the comments made by my colleagues is that the owner of Shortfield House could have given up a little bit more land for these. have given up a little bit more land for these proposed developments. Am I right? I.e. the area between the two, I guess, to the north of the red bit and to the south of the little trees.
The area between the application site in red and the area to the north that we were just discussing actually forms the site axis for Shortfield Common House, so that actually runs from Hamlish Lane up to the house at the rear.
Councillor Hall.
Yeah, just as a question for the officers. I mean, with the proposed dwellings, how big is the garden size in comparison to the dwellings which are surrounding? I mean, is it substantially smaller or what sort of area are you talking about remaining for recreation?
Yeah, I think if you actually have a look in the context of the surrounding area, there is no defined garden size. They're all quite varied. I mean, if you look here, they're quite a bit shorter, they're a little bit longer here, they're wider down here. The only one that's really quite, you know, more uniform would be these properties down here. So we would say that there's no real uniform to be able to benchmark against and that all adds to the character of the area.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Inchpot.
Thank you, Chairman. Could we see the photograph again of the street scene showing those houses? Yes. Those are all fairly modest sized, I would have thought. I do get the feeling that what's being proposed would be sort of rather dominating the scene and too large in relation to what else is there. So yes, I'm definitely unhappy about this. This is once again trying to get a court into a pint pot. Thank you.
Peter Cleverland.
Thank you, Chairman. Yeah, just to pick up on one point on the scale, if we could just ask Chairman to pop to the block plan, please. So I mean, that doesn't show you the wider context, but obviously from that photo that we were just looking at, the properties on the other side of the road are fairly close to the frontage of the road. These are set back, so they are less dominant, so you have got that setback. Appreciate the comments on the rear garden sizes, but we've got to look at whether that's actually harmful. Is it harmful to the amenity of future occupants? They're still a reasonable size for a family-sized property. More modern, you know, they are more traditional properties surrounding the area, you know, properties you don't often see such larger gardens, but we've got to, what we need to have a look at is what is the harm of that visually? You wouldn't see them because they'd sit behind the properties and the properties are set back again from the street scene, so there is some spacious layout and you've got the opportunity for frontage. Sorry, councillor Edwards. Thank you.
Councillor Edwards.
Thank you. Can we have a look at the block plan again with all the houses opposite? Now, these are further down, if I remember rightly, they're lower down from the road and as you can see, the gardens are a good size. Now, this proposal, the gardens would not be of a similar size, could tell them the size of these properties. They would dominate the area and it's out of keeping. There's plenty of opportunity to provide more space here, but again, you know, what we're trying to do is, as one of my colleagues said, we're trying to get a court into a pint pot. You know, it's just downgrading the whole area. It's unacceptable, sorry.
Councillor Ratt.
Thank you, Chairman. Could you go back to the site plan, please, the colourful one? I've just realised I can just make out one, two and three on that picture, which is plots one, two and three and therefore the boundaries are the thin black lines and therefore the rear boundary of the garden is literally the line at the top of the picture. What is that crinkle-crinkle wall across the three plots? Is that an existing terracing feature?
That's a retaining wall because of the topography of the land.
Because of the topography. See, I'm still in two minds on this. I must say that compared to the surrounding properties, I wouldn't think these are overdevelopments because a number of them are semi-detached, with similar size, although these gardens are maybe a little smaller. The detached house here is quite a substantial building. There are one or two like it in the area, but not most of them. It's a pleasant mix in a way and I guess most developments we consider end up squeezing courts into a pint pot. I'm still undecided. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Adams.
We are not supposed to squeeze courts into pint pots in candidate areas of the AONB. The whole point of the AONB, it's supposed to be open and with plenty of space between the properties and of course a good design. And what I can't quite understand is, if you look on page 12 of the plan where the site is and you look at, on that diagram there of the houses on those plots, I mean, they are sort of, each one is almost twice the size of any of the surrounding houses because they take up, you know, a good, if you look from the front to the back, a good third, if not a bit more, of the distance of the garden and that's colossal compared to all the houses all around it. They're obviously exceptionally large compared to the houses all round.
Councillor Inchpot. New points, I trust.
Just on the point of the AGLV stroke AONB, Chairman, it's my understanding that any development in those designated areas should enhance the area and by no stretch of the imagination do I feel that this development would enhance it. Thank you.
Fine. Before I move to the vote, do the officers want to come back in to this discussion? Peter?
Thank you, Chairman.
Right, members, in which case we will move to the update sheet. Revise recommendation, subject to conditions 1 to 14, informative 1 to 8 as set out on pages 39 to 45 of the report, plus the additional condition 15 as set out on the update sheet, permission be granted. Can I have a show of hands, those in favour, please, show.
That's none.
Those against?
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine.
Abstentions?
One.
Thank you. So can I have an alternative recommendation, proposal, second and reasons? Councillor Adams.
Thank you, Chairman. I recommend that the application be refused on the grounds of overdevelopment, insufficient consideration within one kilometre of the spa. And what was the other one? Well, yes, and in the candidate area of the AONB too, it was, what would you say? Inappropriate to closure of the countryside of the site. Could you express that much more effectively, please?
First of all, if I can just offer two pieces of advice in relation to the impact on the special protection area, the proposal isn't considered to have an impact on the SPA. It is only a net gain of three units, which is unlikely to have an adverse likely significant effect on the special protection area. And advice from Natural England is that small developments of this scale are unlikely to impact on protected species in those areas. Given the technical nature of that objection, I would caution you against having a reason for refusal on that particular issue.
Could I ask then, why was that a reasonable or used for the rejection of the three houses on the site next door?
Can I ask councillor Coburn to come in?
Yes, I mean, surely it's singly and cumulatively and that's something we have to take into account, because although any small development like this might not have instantly an impact, we are as an authority, we have to keep an eye that cumulatively, what we're giving permission to for, you know, is not having an effect on the spa, so we have to cover ourselves on this.
Isn't it also overdevelopment and a cramped form in that area? Councillor King.
Sorry, Chairman, I agree. I think they're very splendid houses, but what concerns me is their bulk and mass on such a small site. Might be slightly more helpful wording.
Fine, we have some words coming in already. Do we have a second up for this motion, please? Thank you, councillor Hall. Councillor Adams.
I'm hoping that we'll get some words of wisdom from the officers to cover this refusal.
Thank you.
I'm sure it's been prepared in advance.
Sorry, I would also like to just offer a second piece of advice in relation to the AONB. Members may remember in relation to an application which we previously refused on Dockenfield Farm, we actually sought some legal advice on these areas where they are candidate areas for AONB and the advice was that we should rely on the particular quality of these AGLV areas rather than specifically referring to AONB. And so my advice to members this evening, based on your comments that you've given us so far, is that the proposal, as a result of the quantum of development and the bulk and mass of built form, would cause material and detrimental harm to the intrinsic character, beauty and openness of the countryside and AGLV, contrary to policies C2, C3, D1 and D4 of the Waverley Borough Local Plan and paragraph 17 of the MPPF 2012. Thank you.
You paraphrase me very well.
If there are no further comments, members, let's move to the recommendation for refusal on the grounds that we've just discussed. Can we have those in favour, please, show?
That's nine.
Against? Abstentions?
One.
Thank you very much indeed. Permission is refused on that application. Moving on to item B1, WA 2016 0919, erection of detached building together with extension alteration to the existing dwelling, provide three additional dwellings associated works at 25 Kings Road, Hazemere, GU 272QA. Louise.
Thank you, Chairman. The site is located on the southern side of Kings Road and is outlined in red on your location plan and the site is surrounded by a mixture of residential properties surrounding it. As you can see from the aerial photo, the site is covered by built form with a small area to the south that does not contain built form. This first photo here on your left shows the front of the property taken from Kings Road. The site is currently in use as a car park at ground floor level with a residential flat at first floor level above. The second photograph here is taken from the rear car park to the south of the site, where you can see the extent of the built form across the entire site. To the right of this photo here is Four Long Dean Road and in the rear of the photo, you can see the adjoining properties at 19 to 23 Kings Road and 27 to 29 Kings Road. This first photo on the top left is taken from Kings Road looking east, where you can see the front elevation of 19 to 23 Kings Road here and the application site here. This second photo is taken in the other direction looking west with 27 to 29 Kings Road here and the other residential properties beyond. This bottom photo is taken to the south-east of the site, looking towards the front of Four Long Dean Road. The site is here, just to the side of this building, along here. And this photograph is taken from Long Dean Road. The site is just here in the gap there and Four Long Dean Road is positioned there. Here you can see the change in land levels between Long Dean Road, which is at a significantly higher level than the application site and the property adjacent at Four Long Dean Road. As part of the proposal, part of the existing building to the rear would be demolished and a two-storey extension would be erected to the front of the site to create a three-story building with accommodation in the roof space comprising two one-bedroom flats in the first, second floors and in the roof space. The ground floor would form an undercoffed car parking area through here, leading to car parking in the centre of the site. In the rear of the site, a three-story building is proposed to be erected and this would form two one-bedroom flats. As you can see from the block plan, this building is of an unusual shape. This has been designed to prevent an unacceptable impact on the adjoining occupiers at Long Dean Road, which have some windows at high level here and along the front of the building. This slide here shows the existing and proposed elevations. The top two elevations show the elevations which front Kings Road. As you can see, the proposed ridge height of the building would match the adjoining properties here. This building would be faced with brick at first floor level and render and timber cladding at second floor level. It would have a slate roof. And these elevations show the rear of the site, so that is taken from the centre of the site, looking towards the rear. Each of the flats on the front building would have a rear terrace area similar to those found on the adjoining properties. These elevations show the building at the rear of the site. The top two elevations show the front elevation of the rear building and with the adjoining property at Four Long Dean Road here. This building would have a low pitched roof and would be of a modern design with render, cedar cladding and a zinc roof. And the bottom elevation, this shows the elevation from Long Dean Road at the rear. As you saw earlier, Long Dean Road is a much higher level and this dark line that runs through the middle shows the ground level at Long Dean Road. So as you can see, only a small proportion of the building would be sort of above that ground level on Long Dean Road. These images are in colour, so they will give you a better indication of what the property would look like. Here on your top left, you've got the front elevation, which is fronting Kings Road and the rear elevation, which shows the terrace areas and dormer features. And again, the more modern building in the rear of the site showing at the rear and the elevation which fronts Long Dean Road, as you can again see, this is the ground level with this black line through the site there. This slide demonstrates the western site sections. As you can see, this is the proposed building at the rear, the more modern building, which is fronting Long Dean Road and this clearly shows you that the land level changes and building fronting Kings Road. And this one again shows you the eastern site section. Again, this is the building fronting Kings Road and this is the one to the rear towards Long Dean Road with Four Long Dean Road there. This gives you a perspective drawing of what the proposal could look like. Again, this is the building to the front, which is in keeping along the ridge height of 19 to 23. And again, this shows the building to the rear and here you can see quite clearly the shape of the building, which as I said before, has been designed around protecting the amenities of the occupiers of Four Long Dean Road. This perspective is taken from the south-west and so you can see the rear of the buildings with the terrace areas on the rear of both the front building and the back one. This slide shows the ground and first floor plans. So at ground floor level, the entrance to the front building would remain in the similar position to existing, that goes up to the flats at first and second floor level and in the roof space and the access to the car parking area, which would remain as existing from Kings Road. At the rear of the site, you've got a one-bedroom flat with cycle storage and bin storage here. At first floor level, you can see the one-bedroom flat at the front of the site and part of the one-bedroom flat which is positioned on the first and second floor levels. So here, at the front of the site, you've got the second flat, which is in the front building, which is a split-level flat on second and third floor, and then at the rear of the site, you've got the remainder of that flat, which was also positioned at first floor. the site, you've got the remainder of that flat, which is also positioned at first floor. If I can draw members' attention to the update sheet, which outlines an additional letter of representation in support of the application, and if I can just take you through the determining issues. In conclusion, the site is in a sustainable location and will provide three additional dwellings. It would have an acceptable design and appearance, and would have an acceptable impact on the surrounding neighbouring buildings. Furthermore, the parking and access are considered to be acceptable. The matters of principle and technical opinion are the principle of the development, housing land supply, the effect on the SPAs, land contamination and highways impacts, and the matters for members' judgment are the impact on visual amenity, impact on residential amenity, and the standard of accommodation and provision of amenity and place face. Thank you, members, and if you have any questions, I'll have to answer them.
Thank you, Louise. Councillor King.
Thank you, Chairman. I think this is a really creative and imaginative use for an incredibly difficult site. As you can see from the pictures we've seen on Kings Road itself, this is this really odd building that sticks out like a sore thumb in the street scene, and from the back in Long Dean Road, again, it is an odd space, and I think this is incredibly imaginative and really good use. The only question I've got on it is, actually, it's quite clear on page 55 of the report, it's one of the perspective drawings from the south-west. I'm a little bit concerned, and I'm pretty sure I know what the answer's going to be, about overlooking on 19 and 23, oh, and 25 itself, from the modern separate new building at the back, but I think the windows are probably all obscured, they're probably utility windows. Could you possibly confirm that? That's my only query.
Louise.
Some of the windows facing that direction are obscure glazed, and the remainder are considered to be at such an oblique angle that they wouldn't cause sort of material harm in relation to direct overlooking.
Councillor Round.
Thank you, Chairman. May I also ask a question on that same drawing that councillor King referred to on page 55? Is the hatched area in the middle, is that amenity space for the flats at the front, and the amenity space for the one at the rear, is its triangular bit by the windows? Is that how it's divided up?
No, I'll show you the block plan in a minute, but basically, that is basically the entrance to the rear flats, and the car parking will come in the centre of the site. But as you can see from this image, each of the units have their own terrace areas here at the front building, and then here at the rear building, and then there is a ground floor, sort of rear yard type area for the ground floor flat at the rear.
So what's the brown hatched area in the middle?
It's car parking, I'll just get you the block plan. So as you can see here, the area you're talking about is this area here, so it's the entrance with part of the car parking spaces.
Oh, I thought the parking was underneath those hatched areas, so thank you for the correction. So the cars will be open to the air, as it were, in the middle of the site?
Yes, so if you look at the first floor plan, you can see it more clearly, so this part of it is, you are correct, part of it is under the building and under the terrace area here, but this part, so you will see parking space four effectively in the gap.
I see, thank you. And lastly, is the access to the two flats at the rear of the building, i.e. in Long Dean Road, is that from Long Dean Road?
No, that's not from Long Dean Road. Again, that will be through the site here, and the entrance to the ground floor one is through this entrance here into the ground floor flat, the derangement here at the back, and the first floor one is here with the stairs up to the upper four flats.
So there isn't any access to Long Dean Road or from Long Dean Road?
There isn't, no.
Okay. I must say, I'd also like to agree with councillor King that it is an imaginative design for an eyesore of a site. Thank you.
Councillor Adams.
Thank you, yes, I've got a couple of questions. The first one is, in respect of the three-story building in the front, is there a fire escape?
We don't look at fire escape as part of planning, that will be part of building regulations, who will ensure that there is adequate fire access and exiting from the building.
Okay. And then the other question is, I noticed really, on the photographs you showed us at the beginning, all of the houses along that road were really brick-faced, I just wondered why we'd suddenly got one with wooden fronting, which presumably is going to be quite difficult to maintain, unless it's plastic wood, of course.
The timber cladding on the front elevation is really these small areas here. The first floor would be brick to match the existing with a small area of render in between the windows and to the side. With regards to the building at the rear, it is adjacent to 4 Long Dean, which is a rendered building, and this has been designed to look deliberately different from the surrounding buildings, and given the shape of the building, it would be very difficult to try and tie this in without looking contrived.
One at the back, I thought that's fine, it was the one at the front.
Councillor King.
Sorry, Chairman, thank you for letting me come back. Can I go back to the building at the rear, please? Are they accessing? Yeah, they go right through. So they will use the same bin store as the front building?
That's correct, the bin store is, if I go back to the block plan.
Yeah, okay, I remember where it was, they will be using it. Okay, that's fine, thank you.
Thank you, members. Councillor, yes.
I've only got one comment, and that is, I'm just puzzled about why it has to look quite so different to everything, sorry, the property at the front, number 25. Puzzled as to why it has to look quite so very different to anything around it. It'd be much easier in my mind if the windows on the top story were arched as the windows are on the properties that flank it. Is there, anyone want to support my aesthetic concern? Ah, well, thank you.
Okay, councillor Piper.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I have to agree with councillor King. I think that a lot of time and effort has been spent in designing a really creative building on this really difficult site, and I love the sort of the modernist approach for the rear element, and the improvement to the front of the building can only be, well, applauded. Thank you.
Councillor Hall.
Chairman, councillor Piper stole my words there. I mean, the wooden cladding on the front will only serve to make it look a lot nicer than it currently does. To say it's an eyesore at the moment is putting it mildly, and I think that the innovative approach they've taken, you know, will be a thousand times better than what it currently is.
Councillor Round, do you want to come back?
Well, I agree with many of my colleagues, but not the last comment, sorry, councillor Hall. I agree that it would look nice if it was more harmonious with the flanking buildings. I think that wooden cladding will be a nightmare to maintain being three stories up. It's not my problem, no, but it's...
Yes.
However, thank you.
Luckily, it's not a planning issue. So, members, officers, do you have any comment to make? No? Let's then move to the recommendation, the permission be granted, subject conditions 1 to 11, informative 1 to 9 on pages 77 to 83 of the report. Those in favour, please show.
That's unanimous.
Unanimous, thank you. Permission granted. That concludes the meeting. Thank you all very... Oh, one final point. I did ask Peter Cleveland before. We condition many of our comments on planning permission on construction times, delivery times, parking of operatives' vehicles. I just wonder, and I asked a question before, enforcement seems to be rather difficult, but we are putting conditions on, do we need more teeth?
Yes, thank you, Chairman. I think it's appropriate to submit those construction hours and control and management conditions, sorry, it is appropriate to apply those. We do have to look at the enforceability of conditions and look at whether we're applying them on every form of development. If you've got a single-story extension to a back of a property, you'd probably advise that it's not proportionate to add something like that sort of condition, given the level of work, but for these, especially a scheme like we've just considered, where it's very close-knit with developed area and quite, accesses would probably be quite constrained, yes, that's probably the word. It is appropriate, but in terms of enforcement, we do, if we're going to take action, we do need to identify what the harm is, so they might be in breach of condition, but we need to look at if that's causing a specific harm. If there's one person working internally, is that going to cause concern? But we do need to look for evidence to take it forward, to deal with it, and if we can, we can take appropriate action, enforce against it and prosecute if that gets to that stage, but hopefully intervention before that will avoid that. Thank you, Chairman.
Councillor Edwards.
Just one further point there. In this particular site, there is a contamination issue with the fuel tank. That is going to be very difficult in this particular site, so we really need to have the building inspector or whoever there to monitor that very, very carefully.
Councillor Adams.
Yes, I think I'd like to emphasise again, our enforcement department is not very large. We do rely on locals to inform them if they feel that conditions are not being met. So it is important that the neighbours know what the conditions are.
Thank you very much indeed. Councillor King.
It might be some consolation, Chairman, to those that are concerned, that the new building, which is still on there, adjacent to the dentist, much to our amazement, was built with very little trouble at all with access, amazingly, because it is an incredibly difficult site. However, they did a good job. I was surprised, but they did.
They did a brilliant job on that one, yes, totally agree. Thank you, members. That concludes the meeting.